We'll call on you tomorrow.
Okay.
Early, I guess, ten o'clock.
I gotta go to work.
And I'll call the order of the business of April 28th, 2015. Mr. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Natapegiyan?
Grazie.
Kenneth Baron?
Here.
Thomas Berry?
Here.
Robert Constant?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Margaret Horvath?
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
I'd like to call on our Human Resource Director, Elizabeth Saboto Perry, who will be making some presentations to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Mayor, if you and, uh...
Some people is... You need a mic here? Sneak sneakers.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Human Resource Director, Elizabeth Saboto Perry. It's with great pleasure that I'm here tonight presenting some of our employees with milestone anniversaries. This week is Employee Appreciation Week. We did this last year, um, and it was successful, and we're gonna try to do it into the future. So this week is about thanking the employees that make Dearborn Heights the great city that it is. We live in a complicated world. Fast-paced technology, you know how it goes. Most of you are on Facebook, they, everyone thinks it's acceptable to give a thumbs up when you like something, when you appreciate something. We send text messages that say TXS, maybe, and that stands for thanks. But I still feel that today, even in 2015, it's important to tell people, especially employees, that we appreciate the hard work that they do to make Dearborn Heights the strong family that it is and to make the city work. And so this week is about our employees and a heartfelt thank you to all of you who make it as strong as it is. So without further ado, um, there's some employees that are here tonight and some that couldn't be with us, and so we'll, for, if you happen to be watching this on cable, YouTube, whatever, we'll get your certificates to you in the, in the mail. And, full disclosure, if I've screwed up on anybody, if I've missed you, similar to what I said last year, let me know. I'll correct it, I'll come back up here, even admit that I'm the one that made the mistake. I take full ownership, I'll treat you to lunch, and if you don't wanna have lunch with me, that's completely fine, I'll send you a gift certificate. You won't be eating lobster, though. And if my mom didn't watch this, I'd say my typical lunch is M&amp;M's, but, but I'll do better for you. All right, so our first award, we're doing it in increments of five. So for our fifth-year anniversary, we have Ronald Amon, who's with our Community Economic Development Director.
Can you stay up here?
It's up to you.
It's gonna be full.
Yeah, it might be full, yeah.
Why don't you stay up here if we get the...
Line up.
Jesse Dombrowski in the DPW, he's not here. Jean McMailey, who works in the court system. Frank Palzinnelli is also celebrating five years from the Department of Public Works. Paul Spear, also from the Department of Public Works. Erica Farion for the Dispatch. Jennifer Wyatt Green from Library is celebrating five years. Under ten years, we have Officer Kerry Cates is celebrating ten years of employment with Dearborn Heights. Gil Svalia from the Fire Department is celebrating ten years. Christopher Dishon from the DPW is celebrating ten years. Robert Flynn from the Fire Department, celebrating ten years. Jason Franks from the Fire Department, celebrating ten years. Stacy Frost, celebrating ten years from the Court. Mike Gazowski, celebrating ten years from the Police Department. Jake Hatton, also from the Police Department. Nicholas Hutchins from the Police Department, celebrating ten years. Sean Paulus, who is here, celebrating ten years. Newly, um, newly promoted Eric Walsh from the Fire Department is celebrating ten years. Then, under fifteen years of service, dispatcher Gina Bremen is celebrating fifteen years of service. And that is a lot of calls, right?
Anthony Saroni from the Fire Department is celebrating fifteen years, along with Daniel
Chadwick from the Fire Department, celebrating fifteen years. David Degue, celebrating fifteen years from the Fire Department. Cheryl Frank from the Recreation Department, celebrating fifteen years. Ruben Gonzalez from the Police Department, celebrating fifteen years. Scott Keller from the Police Department, fifteen years. Darla Mandell from the Police Department, celebrating fifteen years. Lisa Martin from the Fire Department is celebrating fifteen years. Brian Mitchell from the Police Department is celebrating fifteen years. Patrick Mueller from the Police Department, celebrating fifteen years. Sean Payne from the Fire Department, celebrating fifteen years. Chris Pellerito from the Police Department, celebrating fifteen years. Mark Russ from the Department of Public Works, celebrating fifteen years. And Mr. Mohammed Sob is celebrating fifteen years from the Building Department. Under twenty years of service, our Fire Marshal, Douglas Bailey, who's here, is celebrating twenty years. Officer Terry Boudry is celebrating twenty years. He's been here all day. Celebrating twenty years is also Officer Jeffrey Colan from the Police Department. Twenty years for Michael Henninger in the Recreation Department at the Richard A. Young. Also celebrating twenty years from the Fire Department is Bill Herman. Chris Clemchak from Community and Economic Development is celebrating twenty years. Officer Lee Laffey from the Police Department is celebrating twenty years. Scott Lurst from the Police Department, celebrating twenty years. Tom Marinkevich from the Police Department is celebrating twenty years. Rory McMammon from the Police Department is celebrating twenty years. David Moore from the Fire Department is celebrating twenty years. Officer Ed Pila from the Police Department is celebrating twenty years. Judge Mark Pawecki is celebrating twenty years with Dearborn Heights. Twenty years for Gary Voyles from the Police Department. Keith Van Balkenberg from the Police Department is celebrating twenty years. Twenty years for Eric Watlin from our Building and Engineering Department. Twenty years for Mickey Wawira in the Fire Department. Twenty years for Tim, Tim Zawacki in the Police Department. And under twenty-five years of service, we have Officer Michael Botcher from the Police Department. Sergeant Joanne Beatle here from the Police Department. Marty Beek from the Police Department. Detective Matthew Larabel from the Police Department is celebrating twenty-five years. Officer Mark Peronello, who many of you know from the Neighborhood Watch. Also, Officer Bob Pachallo is celebrating twenty-five years. Robert Schnell from the Police Department is celebrating twenty-five years. All right, so then I looked at everyone that had thirty years and up, and, let's face it, thirty years and up is pretty significant. So, thirty-five years of service, actually, as of today, we had two gentlemen that started the Cadet Program on April 28th, thirty-five years ago. One is Lieutenant Scott Obrick, who is here, so for thirty-five years. And the other one is none other than Chief Lee Gavin. And then William Zimmer, Bill Zimmer, is celebrating thirty-six years of employment. Don Sapansky is celebrating thirty-seven years of employment with the city. Ray Winawiki is also celebrating thirty-seven years of employment with the city. Will Andrews from the Department of Public Works has served forty-one years for the city of Dearborn Heights. And our highest seniority person served forty-four years, and she's none other than Janet Kelsinski, who works in the Comptroller's Office. And last but not least, I can't slight my boss, right? So Mayor Pawecki is also celebrating forty years with the city of Dearborn Heights.
I wish we had, Todd, I'd love to ask each of you, what was the most significant or interesting event that happened in the city? And I know it'd be tough for them to just give us one, because there'd be many, but this is an example. These are the people, and the ones that were called that are not here today, as Elizabeth said, that make the city operate and work. And there's many of them out there that you didn't get an award today, but you have many years of service. You make the city operate and operate well. And on behalf of all the residents and myself as a mayor, thank you so much for the effort that each and every one of you put, because each of you is what makes Dearborn Heights a great, special place. So on behalf of the mayor, the treasurer, the city clerk, and all the council, thank you and congratulations to each of you.
Just as a fact, they represent 1,235 years of service together. Yeah, right.
Thought we were gonna have a big hug.
It's a few bigs.
I just like the...
Couple, yeah.
Yeah, few, you're right.
I wouldn't want to do that one.
We'll see you later, good seeing you.
Good seeing you, took care.
Who's the guy with the white hair? Notice I am here.
Am I famous?
Steve Abdullah, who's running?
I don't know him, never saw him.
Okay, congratulations to all.
First strong in the force, for example.
Next order of business, item number three, the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski?
Move the council approve the agenda for this date, April 28th, 2015.
Support. Second by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, approval of the minutes, 4A, the minutes, the regular meeting of April 14th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. I move to approve the minutes for April, is this April 14th, 2015, a regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, as outlined in 4A.
Second. Second by Councilman Natapegiyan, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Berry?
Motion to approve current claims 6-1 through 6-22.
Support. Second by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath?
Item 610, McKenna and Associates, uh, the amount is $2,140, but on the back, there's a total due of $10,220. Can somebody explain that to me? There's a lot of unpaid past due balances. You wanna see this?
As invoices come to the Building Department, we just check the, the invoices that pertain to the services that were done, okay, either for the planning or the zoning commission. Now, if something, if there was an invoice that was already, it's a late invoice, we had already either approved or disapproved, it's already gone, so which means we're looking at the most recent one.
Okay, but this, this, this was dated April 3rd, and there's one, two, three, four, five unpaid. So what you're saying is, they've been paid?
I am not saying that, no. I'm saying that it's, they were either approved as a total or not approved. I only initial the ones, the, the sums that pertain to the specific projects that we have in the Building Department.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I noticed the same thing, so I, I had, I gave a call to Mr. Jackson, and he sent me, I just received it, uh, past invoices, and what there was is, there's some items in there that, uh, and we're gonna follow up on that, but I, I got all the details because I noticed, I said, what is this, where's this going? So, more than willing to share that all with you, but I still haven't investigated as to why, but I think what is happening is some of the items, there were other charges on the invoices, apparently we didn't pay and I don't...
Which means I just let go, I didn't even initial.
So I gotta find out why, what is going on that only parts of them are getting paid.
Uh, I, I would like to add to that, Mr. Chairman. A while back, oh, at least a year, maybe longer, uh, we had, we discussed, um, the McKenna Association with our, um, Planning Commission. Uh, I've been told that, I thought it was up to the Planning Commission to hire or fire or whatever, uh, their planning people, but I've been told it's up to us to suggest that they look for a new planner. How do I do that?
If, with, with your suggestion, and if some of you feel, 'cause I feel the same way, I submitted something some months ago, and then a lot of people said it wasn't up to me or the council, it was up to the Planning Commission, but, uh, I'll go out and do a request for, um, quotes, and then, uh, I would think that would be something we would all wanna interview them, and I'll, I'll find three or four.
Go ahead.
Good, good, okay, go ahead. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item number eight, reports from the mayor, AA, for Mayor Pawecki, North Dearborn Heights Baseball League Annual Opening Day Parade.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve North Dearborn Heights Baseball League's request to hold their annual NDHBL opening day parade on Saturday, May 2nd, 2015, 10:00 AM. Police Chief Gavin and Fire Chief Brogan have both approved the route, provide services as they require, as outlined in 8A.
Second. Second by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number nine, reports from city officials, 9A, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, Ann Arbor Trail Improvement Change Order Number Six.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Natapegiyan?
I move to approve a William Zimmer Public Service Administrator's request for the Ann Arbor Trail Improvement for Change Order Number Six. Department of Public Works has reviewed and concur with Wade Trim's letter dated April 17th requesting approval for Change Order Six in the amount of $155,040 for the Ann Arbor Trail pavement repairs. This increase is necessary due to deteriorated condition. There are funds in the major road repair to account for this extra work, as outlined in 9A.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski, is there any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath?
I don't know if this is for Bill or, um, Dan. Okay, it says here that this change order is due to the deteriorated condition of the Explain that to me. Didn't they know the deterioration of the pavement when they initially...
Right, when we initially estimated the square yards, when we initially estimated the square yards, it was 13,000-plus square yards, all right? Um, and that was two years ago.
Okay.
And now, with, with the markings we did, we, we needed extra, I think, 1,800 square yards.
Okay.
All right, so it's just, it's based on field conditions out there today.
All right, that's it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number B, from Treasurer Rally Investment and Fund Report for March 31st, 2015.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to receive note and file the investment of funds report for March 31st, 2015, as outlined in 9B.
Second. Second by Councilman Natapegiyan, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9C, from Police Chief Gavin, request to auction vehicles.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Constant?
I move, we concur with Police Chief Gavin and authorize the auctioning of the vehicles as outlined in 9C.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion? Chief, I, just a question, you can say right there, but I noticed there's a lot of vehicles in the yard down there, is it gonna come up, are we still scrapping parts?
Still scrapping parts, and then we're gonna get, get, get rid of those.
Yeah.
We don't have any more, I know, so it'll be over.
You'll see them as taxi cab units.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Number D, from Community and Economic Development Director Amon, uh, the 2015-16 CDBG Action Plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Berry?
Motion to approve the 2015-2016 CDBG Action Plan and authorize the mayor to sign, as outlined in 9D.
Second. Second by Councilman Natapegiyan, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number E, from Recreation Director Gribble, for the year 2013-14 Wayne County Parks Millage Intergovernment Agreement.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Natapegiyan?
I move to approve of Parks Recreation Director Kenneth Gribble's request for the fiscal year 2013-14 Wayne County Park Millage IGA approval request. The city was awarded $36,506.76 to erect the 20-by-30 picnic pavilion and protecting fence for Central Park. Therefore, it is recommended that the enclosed IGA between the city and Wayne County for the utilization of the city's fiscal year 2013 Wayne County Park Millage allotment be approved by the council, and that the mayor and the clerk be authorized to sign the enclosed IGA on behalf of the two original documents, both to be returned, to be signed and sent to the county.
Second. Support. Second by Councilman Kaczynski, as outlined in 9E, is that correct, Maker?
Yes.
Second? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number F, from Tifa Administrator Oliverio, request to amend the 2014-15 Tifa budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath?
Um, because the Michigan Court of Appeals has dismissed our case against the Detroit Zoological Authority and Zoological Society, I recommend that the, uh, City Council approve the, and concur with to the Tifa Board and amend the Tifa's 2014-15 budget by $18,989.55 and to increase the contingency funds by that amount. As outlined in 9F.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski, is there any discussion? Gary?
Just a little clarification, uh, what happened was is, uh, the city and all of the related entities ended up prevailing, and it wasn't our case, it was basically the appeal by Zoological Society that they took, and then they realized that it was a loser, and basically they just backed off and dropped their whole appeal, rather than go forward and potentially have a published decision against them. So, that, you know, the case wasn't dismissed, so to speak, it was, it was dismissed, but it was dismissed in a way that was favorable to the city, just to make it clear.
Good, thank you. Any further discussion?
I have a question, I, I assume the, the zoo didn't get any of the money, or we, I was under the impression that even though the, the treasurer kept the money in escrow somewhere, I thought I read in the paper just the opposite, that...
No, basically, the money that was in dispute, uh, the Tifa ended up getting, which was what was appropriate by statute, as court found.
Right, so they got all...
But they changed the law to end up having a carpe, if that's correct.
Yeah, we, we're no longer collecting DIA or zoo law, zoo money. The judge let us have last year's, starting this year.
Thank you, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number G, from Tifa Administrator Oliverio, proposed 2015-16 Tifa budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes, I move to approve Tifa's proposed 2015-2016 budget, as outlined in 9G.
Support.
Second by Councilman Berry? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number H, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, parking lot resurfacing at City Hall.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Natapegiyan?
I move to approve of William Zimmer Public Service Administrator's request for the employee parking lot resurfacing at City Hall. In October of 2014, Best Asphalt was given areas one and two, the south parking lot. He's requesting our approval to allow Best to resurface areas three and four, as indicated on their map. Requesting a fund transfer of $55,000 from the highway road account to the Building Maintenance Capital Fund in order to pay for the additional cost, as outlined in 9H.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Vince, is that all right to be one motion for the fund transfer and all? Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes, for Director Zimmer, uh, with Best Asphalt, you have experience with them, I always see they've done the previous, but do we have a, any type of guarantee or warranty on their work?
Yeah, there's one, your workmanship and materials.
Thank you.
They've contracted with the city for quite a few years, too, so we've never had any issues with them.
Very good, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, Ordinance and Resolutions, 11A, second reading of Propose Ordinance H-1505 regarding alcoholic liquor retail licenses and retail sales.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski?
I move the council approve the, uh, second reading of Proposal Ordinance H-1505 regarding alcoholic liquor retail licenses and retail sales.
Support. Second by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion?
Effective upon publication? Chairman?
Yeah, effective upon publication in newspapers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second?
Thank you.
Okay, good, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 13, new business, 13A, business license renewal for Red Lobster Hospitality LLC, 6850 North Telegraph.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Natapegiyan?
I move to approve of the business license for the Red Lobster Hospitality or Restaurant located at 6850 North Telegraph Road, as outlined in item 13A.
Support. Second by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This ends our regular portion of the council, is there anything that comes from any council members?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath?
Um, I have a question for the mayor or... I have a question for the mayor or Bill Zimmer, either one. I noticed there's yellow barricades around him now, the two rundown planners out in front of City Hall, are we going to take those out of there?
Yeah, we are going to take them out. It's been a long process. Like to take them out at the same time if we do the parking lot. It's pretty messy, those things are embedded pretty well into the ground. And there's also Edison line running underneath there, so that's what that's all about.
Okay, and the other, the other question I have or suggestion is, I don't know if you've noticed the overhang on, where are we here? Over by the assessor's office, the door coming in?
They're going to be painted this summer.
Okay, that's all I have.
Councilman Coniston?
This Saturday, starting at 9 o'clock, is our 22nd Annual Ekorst Creek Cleanup, so we hope everybody can make it. It starts at 9 at Swapka Park, and will go to about 1 o'clock, so we hope to see everybody there.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I noticed on the corner of Rosetta and Ford Road, somebody in a car or a truck ran into the Mimick Insurance Company Masonry wall and knocked hell out of it. I don't, does any, does, mayor, do we know if, anything about that, whether, do the people or the culprits caught, or was it just, oh, the chief, there you go.
I, I did see somebody working out there.
Debris was out there for days, and I was just, I happened to see a guy in a Mercedes parked in the street with his car damaged, and I don't know, I don't know if it was the same guy, but it was really funny, the masonry and block was all over the place for at least two or three days, like nobody knew about it. Anyway, you'd look into that, thank you.
Any other council members? Mayor, do you have anything? Clerk?
We have a, an election, May 5, a week from tonight. Polls open at 7:00 AM, close at 8:00. We will be open this Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00, should you require an absentee ballot. That will be the last day to apply for an absentee ballot. You may still vote at City Hall on Monday until 4:00 PM. The ballots cannot leave City Hall on Monday. Should you have any questions, please call 313-791-3432, and thank you. And please, please, please go out and vote. It's an important vote, so please, please voice your opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, then at this time, if anyone has any announcements, things happening, things going on in the city?
Hello, council chair and mayor, just wanted to mention a couple of events. Next Tuesday, May 5, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM at Carolyn Candy Library, join Jody Speck of the Senior Brigade as she covers how to reorganize, or sorry, recognize, repair scams, and how to work with a contractor. She will also cover understanding reverse mortgages and other tips to avoid foreclosure scams. Just in time for spring, next Wednesday, May 6, from 7:00 to 8:30, we will be having a program on smoking and barbecuing. Join us as two aficionados discuss techniques, methods, and equipment for creating mouthwatering meals. We will serve samples, please register at 313-791-3800. Also, in response to our first ever filled shredding truck, we will add another date, Saturday, June 6, from 11 to 3:00 PM at CK. We're going to be instituting a limit this time, however, of five small banker boxes per car, so everyone can get better served. I also wanted to thank everyone who helped make our open houses a big success. DPW, Starbucks, Parks and Rec, our Dearborn Heights Police, Friends of the Library, Karen Kasperzik, the Crestwood National Honor Society, the RJ Spangler Trio, Star International Academy, and AZ Heating and Cooling for use of their parking lots, and many others. We had well over 2,500 visitors between both buildings, and it could not have been possible without, without all the help of our volunteers and residents, so thank you. That is all for now. Thank you for your time, and see you at the library. It's going to be next Wednesday, May 6, at Carolyn Candy Library from 7:00 to 8:30 PM.
The shredding, the second shredding day, Mike, is when?
The second, 6.
June 6?
Yes.
Tuesday, he's there for elections.
The barbecue event is Wednesday, May 6, from 7:00 to 8:30. The, the shredding date is Saturday, June 6, from 11:00 to 3:00 at CK. It's a makeup date. Okay?
Okay, thanks, Mike.
I just have two quick announcements. I mentioned this earlier, but I wanted the residents to know, on June 6, Saturday, June 6, Dearborn Heights is hosting a low vaccination clinic for cats and dogs in the city. It's actually open to everyone. It's going to be the first 500 residents or non-residents that show up. It's from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Vaccinations are $5. Microchipping is $10. Licensing will be available that day, and it's all cash. You have to come with cash that day. And then also, I just want to let everyone know, from the ordinance department, starting next Monday, May 4, we're going to begin, ordinance officers will all be out issuing violations, we're going to start grass violations next Monday. So this is a good opportunity this weekend, make sure your grass is below six inches, make sure you're, you're mindful of all the debris, if there's any debris on your property. All right? June 6, Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the first 500.
And that's going to be held at?
Right here in City Hall.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Seeing none. Well, at this point, if anyone has any questions or concerns, please direct them to me. If you would like to talk to another council member, the mayor, or department head, let me know, and I will ask he or she if they would like to respond. Councilman Berry will keep time, you will have three minutes. After you give your name, street, and the city you reside in, when you have 15 seconds left, you will hold up this sign, and when the three minutes are up, he will hold this. I have been asked to stick to the time limits, and I will be sticking to that time limits to that, so make sure when you see the 15-second time, you have 15 seconds to wrap it up. Thank you. So if anyone has anything to bring, please come to the podium up here.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, I'm at the Indian River Street in Dearborn Heights. I don't know, for some reason, Mr. Chairman, for the south end, I don't know, why would be called as a natural disaster for our area? Since last council meeting, I've emailed Ms. Seck some pictures of what's been going on in our areas. We'd like, if it would have took during about 10 to 15 minutes, we could have had August 11, 2014 again in our neighborhood. How long do we have to put up with this? Who's going to protect us? We have heard it from you guys, we're working on it, we're working on it. Eventually, if you guys will go yourself, watch the way you guys will answer us when we ask that, it's like it's a funny or it's a joke. I know it could have been a joke for some people, but not for the people who are living out there.
We, we wholeheartedly agree, and our, our sympathies go out with the people that are flooded, but we did have a meeting prior to this at 6:30. Unfortunately, I didn't see a single resident that came, explaining a timeline that we had, on what's, what's going to happen, and what's going to come up, and some possibilities. But we're working on it, we're doing the best we can. We all have, you know, our, you know, our sympathy just go out there, everyone has a flooded basement, I mean, we know it's terrible, I'd hate to see that of citizens, but we're trying to work on this. This is a huge project, and it's going to take a lot of money, but we are working on it.
Well, that's understandable, but the issue is, back on, like, beginning of March, beginning of March, if you can remember, or if you want to pull up the tape and look at it, I've asked you, I've told you, Mr. Chairman, I heard it from Mona Aiman, that there was a decision made, that it's called a natural disaster, some houses in the city, where our guys are still working on it, to debate whether they're going to get covered or not. Unfortunately, I've been trying my best, I want to know, like, I have families all over Dearborn Heights. I didn't see one house or one street, people got stalled in it for the, probably the second night of the flood, not being able to get out of their houses, to get in their houses. Are they in, like, bad situation? Were they worse than us? Today, I called in the mayor's office to ask what's going on or anything. Kristy, with all the respect, she wanted to call me a liar. She started yelling, screaming at me, and she started calling me a liar. Nobody told you to call, you had to call Superman when the flood had happened? I'm talking to you about something. What made you open the other subject? What right do you have to call me a liar? Who are you? Do you want me to take it to a higher step? I have no problem. With all the respect to Chief Lee, I've called his office today, unfortunately, I was not able to call them. I've emailed them, I need his permission. We're not able to find that record, but I want to find that record myself. I want to show her, who's the liar? Me or her?
Mr. Chair?
Couple things I want to touch on. You asked, what's the city doing about the flood situation? And I have to say that, first of all, you have an organization in the southwest part of the city that is working diligently to learn as much as they can about the drains and how they operate in the city. I think they pretty much understand what's happening down there and why it's flooding, along with the meeting we had several weeks ago outlining the plan by the, by the Army Corps of Engineers, and what the mayor is proposing to do in conjunction with other cities and another state. So it is a serious issue, we do take it serious. It's unfortunately, it's, it's a lot, there's a lot of red tape that'll have to go all the way through Congress to get this approved, but we're working on it, believe me.
That's understandable.
We're not, we're not happy with it.
Themself told us it might take another two to three years.
Yeah, probably take longer than that, to be honest with you. And then your, your discussion with the, the office today, I think that that's probably something, if you'd like to stay after and discuss it, I'd be happy to talk to you about it, but I don't think it's something to, to dispute here publicly. If you weren't happy with the response that you got, why don't you wait around to the end, and we'll talk about it.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none?
Move to adjourn.
Move with Councilwoman Horvath?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned, thank you.